We have an amendment here.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Ada, you have the floor for the amendment.
Yes ma'am. On, um, the first amendment's on page five, um, on line...
Three? Three to, three to twelve?
Page five, line seven, actually.
Oh, not three to twelve?
Well, where it reads there, the, on the copy that I'm looking at here, page five, you would read, you'll see on line seven, where it reads amount of at least one million dollars.
Yes.
It should read amount of up to one million dollars per fiscal year, and then insert the language there, beginning FY 2014, are appropriated, da-da-da-da.
Okay. On the amendment, page five, beginning with line seven, after the word "of," to delete "add list" and add the words "up to," and then after the word "year," add the words "beginning fiscal year 2014." On the amendment, hearing no objections? So ordered. Senator Ada, you still have the floor then for...
Yes, and then on page eleven, uh, on line, on line five, it will read, where right now, uh, it should read amount of up to $300,000 per fiscal year, beginning FY 2014.
On the amendment, on page eleven, line five, delete "add list" and replace with "up to," and after "year," add the words "beginning fiscal year 2014." On the amendment, Vice Speaker, you recognize?
If I understand correctly, GCC is currently not receiving any funds from the liquid fuel tax. Is that correct?
Yes, Senator, that's correct.
And so with this amendment, if the author would yield, would, how would you make your interest payments between now and 2014?
Um, we would anticipate that the interest payments would kick in after the construction is completed, and currently, since the construction, um, it takes about, uh, one year to complete the entire construction with the RFP process, the whole bid process, so in 2014 would be when the first interest payments would be due.
Okay.
So, on the amendment? On the amendment, hearing no objection, so ordered. So, on the main motion, or are there any other questions and anyone, or comments from anyone? Senators, will you need the panel anymore?
Just for the housekeeping. Go ahead.
Senator Blas?
I, I think that during the break, there was some discussion that helped to, um, at least the majority of the body, appeasing the, um, concern with regards to where the money was going to come from, so I'm drawing my, uh, my motion.
Without any objections, so ordered. Vice Speaker, you recognize?
I, I have one amendment, Madam Speaker, that, um, is being circulated, and it, it just reads, "Tuition not to be used as debt service. No revenues derived from student tuition or fees assessed by the University of Guam shall be expended as debt service to satisfy the requirements of any authority granted by this act."
One moment, until the Chair gives the amendment. Senator, you may proceed.
And the intent is, um, if we're going to raid the highway fund, then I want to make sure that, in the event the highway fund isn't sufficient, that having undertaken this responsibility, that we don't leave it on the backs of the, the students at the university, um, to pay for it with their fees. Um, it's no secret, I have no children, Madam Speaker, and, um, I'm not leaving alone for them to pay for the next forty years, and I don't want the, to, the students of the university to have to bear this as tuition increases either, so that's my amendment.
On the amendment, Senator Blas, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. President, or Dave, maybe, and I, and I recognize and I see the intent of, um, the mover of this amendment, but, um, do you actually break down in as far as the, the fees and tuitions that none of their money, can you say actually now that none of their money goes towards being able to pay some of the debt service?
No, we don't, we don't break it down, that one.
And then so I, I just don't want us to get into a little bit of a bind here and a stickler with regards to this, saying that, you know, if, if that money goes into a pot, then now you're gonna have to carve that pot out with this stuff and again not use the money. Can that be done, Dave?
That's, that's not the way we do it now, Senator, as, as we, you know, we, from earlier budget presentations, we take our revenues and then allocate them by the expenses that we have, so we don't necessarily on, on most of our budget program this to that payment type of a thing. I think, uh, pers- personally that, uh, this amendment would be a, a bit restrictive in terms of some of the flexibility that we might need.
Okay, um, Madam Speaker, maybe the, the, you know, the mover of the amendment can yield to a question that I may have, is, is this geared towards ensuring that there are no tuition increases or fee increases, um, that will be in place because they would have to satisfy the debt service?
Correct. If I remember the testimony given, currently, $500,000 is provided by the liquid hi- highway fund, $200,000 is provided by the endowment, and $50,000 currently is being provided by the university.
Okay.
All right? For the 750 that they're, that they're currently paying. Under this new agreement, 1.3, no, one, eh, one million is going to be provided by the highway fund, 200 is going to be provided by the endowment fund, no, their, their annual amount that they're going to contribute towards this pot, this five.
The 200 will continue as it is being paid now towards the Leon Guerrero Building, Senator.
Correct.
That's, that's the two.
And so, the, the only amount that the university's putting out is 50 currently, right?
Correct.
And all I'm saying is, if you need to increase the amount of the university's, uh, payments because either the endowment fails because it doesn't have anything, or the highway fund, I don't want it on the backs of the uni- of the university's students. It's only 50 right now, and to say it's not being carved out that way right now anyway, it's not, it, it isn't that, that big a part of your 33, $35 million budget. All I'm saying is, I don't want their, their tuition to be increased because of a need to, to service this debt.
That, that certainly isn't our intent today. If we were to receive the annual appropriation of, oh.
Uh, perhaps if the intent is not to increase tuition to, to pay for buildings, then maybe the amendment ought to be framed that way, instead of, uh, just precluding the option of using any kind of tuition revenue that we currently use, so that if you're, if the intent is to say that tuition, uh, no increase into, and that there will be no increase in tuition to meet this, then, you know, I'm, I'm against tuition increases too.
Senator Ada, I mean, Senator Blas, you still have the floor.
I, and I, again, I, I see that, that in as far as the conversation, um, with the intent, I just don't know whether the, the, the language as, as proffered will help to satisfy that, and I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, right now, as you said, it's not carved out. So, you know, the fact of the matter is, the, the tuition and the fees are part of the funding source to be able to pay the university's, uh, um, portion of, 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 you know, the debt service, and, um, I don't know, I looked to the author, the, I mean, he's gonna...
Do you want to amend?
Well, yeah, um, maybe there's another, if, uh, another senator that wants to be able to talk while I figure out, see how we can...
Senator Guthrie, she has on the amendment?
I'm Chairman. Uh, am I correct, uh, Mr. President, Mr. O'Brien, what is the Gov. Guam share of the university budget right now? What percent is it?
I believe it's about 34% of our overall budget, Senator.
Right, and that's what I recall hearing recently. I don't see how you can, uh, say that tuition can't be used to help defray costs for capital development projects. Um, if that were the case, then you would not be able to probably fully pay the funding off for the school of business building. I think that, uh, I don't think we should tie the hands of the university that way. I think the intent is very clear here. If you're going to be receiving funds to help pay for this, of course, you're, ideally, you wouldn't want to use student tuition to pay for it, but I think to prohibit it 100% for 40 years, which would be the amortization for this, is that correct? It's probably very unrealistic. So, uh, perhaps a simple statement, an amendment which states the desire here to avoid tuition as a source of payment as much as possible, might be a better approach. So, I'd like to make that a recommendation, that rather than have an amendment that prohibits the use of tuition to help pay for this, uh, that maybe the amendment, so the amendment sim- might simply be that, uh, the legislature calls upon the university to avoid the use of tuition to amortize the, uh, payback for, for these facilities.
Okay, just as a point of, of inquiry...
Totally the opposite of what, of course, this amendment calls for. Vice Speaker, are you gonna do a point of information here?
Yes. I'm, I'm glad that Mr. Mr. O'Brien said that, that the government's contribution is only 34% of the operation. So, in my simple DI math, that means the operation of the university's about $100 million a year, and $50,000 that is currently being used, my math isn't very good, but that's, I think, .02%. Two hundreds of a percent of the operation, and you guys can't sequester that out to be able to prevent the students from having a, a, a tuition increase? And out of $100 million budget that you're operating on, $50,000 can't be sequestered out so we can save the students their tuition increases?
Well, Senator, I, I think the point from, uh, the university's point of view is not that that can't be done, because it has, in a, in a way has been done, because we've tried to keep tuition increases from going up. Uh, the point is that you, this is now a 40-year, uh, process in which, you know, on the one hand, we are reminded that, uh, if, uh, at some point in time in the future, um, the, the whole thing collapses, we're gonna end up eating it, and now on top of that, even though it's not likely to make that connection, on top of that, we're being kept from, uh, relying on that source of revenue, which accounts for 25, 30% of our revenue, yeah, uh, that we can't use it for this, and it's not, it's not, it, it, like I said, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. I, there's no greater advocate of flatlining the tuition from now on, but, you know, this is a 40-year-old, uh, thing, so, that, you know, I mean, but, uh, you're, in, in, as it's current, the current practice now, you're absolutely right. It's a miniscule amount, and it's, uh, it's something that can be done, but, you know, in, it, it's, it's in a way, kind of taking away a possible tool that we hope we'll never have to use.
And the point that I'm trying to make is that in haste to try to move this through right now, we've not taken into account the ability to be able to make the payments in the future, we don't know whether or not the endowment's gonna be able to do it, we don't know whether or not the highway fund's gonna be able to pick it up, and we don't know whether or not the university is, but we're gonna do this now, because the window's closing in three months, but I can't protect the students.
Senator Yamashita, on the amendment?
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, actually, I think, uh, I understand that all the conversations that crafted this amendment took into consideration the vision of providing degree programs for the students, and I think that's what's driving all of this, and I heard the student leaders saying that if indeed everything fell apart, that they would be responsible enough to shoulder, um, if that does happen, and so I think that's a very good statement to make. I also believe that none of this would be rendered if it was really irresponsible. This wasn't, uh, this didn't happen in someone's pipe dreams. It was a dream, uh, but then you had legal counsel, and you had Greta, and you had the people in front of us craft it, so I don't think it's something that we just, you know, came out of nowhere, and I think it's, it's a vision, I think it was put together, and I also think that, um, even though the tuition is a very small amount, I think that is a tool in the tool chest, that should be kept and be given, um, to the administration and the management team to determine how those monies are gonna be used. I know in the last, um, budget session, uh, they scrambled, University of Guam scrambled to find some local monies, and there was lots of conversation about raising the tuition, so, uh, while it wasn't raised, Mr. President, wasn't raised?
No.
It was not raised, because they were able to make ends meet, and the legislature was able to give more money.
Right.
Right? Um, I think that still is something that we need to be able to give to you, so you can decide how, how to do that. We can't, uh, I understand that we are trying to protect the future and the leadership, but I also think we need to trust in the decisions that are being made, and know that they were being made, well, with good data, uh, and being made in a responsible manner. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion and the amendment?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, um, I actually have, I'd like to make an amendment to the amendment, um, and actually, it, it recognizes in it, uh, the desire and the concern brought on by, by the good Senator from PD. Um, it, let me go say what it reads. It's, now it says, "Student tuition or fees assessed by the University of Guam shall not be increased to satisfy the requirements of any authority granted by this act."
So, you're going to delete "no revenues derived from," but rather say, "student tuition assessed by the University of Guam shall not be increased?"
To satisfy the requirements of any authority granted by this act.
Okay, "shall not be increased to satisfy the requirements of any authority granted by this act"?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, increased.
Ma'am?
Yes?
Two-second recess.
Okay, brief recess. Well, we are currently on the Blas amendment, and so what that is, is states that student tuition or fees assessed by the University of Guam shall not be increased to satisfy the requirements of any authority granted by this act. So, that's the latest amendment. So, on the amendment, are there any objections to the amendment? There is an objection, so I will call for the votes. All of those then in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. The amendment failed. So, we're back to the original amendment then, where it says, "No revenues derived from student tuition or fees assessed by the University of Guam shall be expended as debt service to satisfy the requirements of any authority granted by this act." On that amendment, are there any objections to this amendment? There is an objection, so I'm gonna call for the votes. All in favor then of the amendment, please raise your hand. The amendment failed. So, on the, uh, amendment, the primary amendment then, are there any other discussion on the amendment? Would the author would like to close? Senator Esposito?
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair. Madam Speaker, at the conclusion of, um, the discussion on, on this amendment to Bill 437, uh, I move that we rise from the committee of the whole with the recommendation, uh, that all amendments made while in the committee of the whole be, remain intact, and that, uh, before we do that, I would just wanna, on behalf of this legislature, thank the members of the panel for their, their guidance, as well as thank every single member of this legislature that participated in move amendments to, to make this thing more, more realistic and more feasible, so that they can achieve the objectives of an original law that you authored, Madam Speaker. So, having said that, I move again that we rise from this committee of the whole with those recommendations, um, with the, with the committee of the whole's recommendations to put the bill in, uh, the voting file to pass.
On the amendment, without any objections, so ordered. We would recess then, and, uh, we allow the panel then to, to leave. First of all, we just want to clarify, of course, the motion then for, to pass with the amendment that was proffered by Senator Esposito. So although there was no objection, we just need to do an affirmation of those in favor, please raise your hand. No to accept the amendment. Yes. Yes, I realize that, but, okay, so, wait, no, it's not unanimous. So the clerks are doing a recording of this. Thank you, Senator, so that passes. Now Senator Esposito on the motion to rise.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on the motion to rise from this committee of the whole, with the committee's recommendation to pass on the matter of Bill 437-31 as amended, as further amended by the committee of the whole, and that the move that any amendments made while we're in the committee of the whole remain intact, and that the recommendation is to pass, and so I make that motion.
So then on the affirmative, again, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
To rise.
Yes, to rise.
Rise.
Okay. The legislature's back in session. Senator Esposito, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I am pleased to report that we've just risen from the committee of the whole on Bill 437-31, and it should be as further substituted by the committee of the whole, and that the committee of the whole's recommendation is to place this bill in the voting file with the recommendation to pass.
On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on the second reading file, we have, the first bill is we have Bill 470-31, and the-
468.
I could do 468 first. 468, Madam Speaker, we had to pull that from the voting file back to the second reading file to make an additional amendment, and this amendment is being proposed by Senator C. Duñez, and it reads, "The mayor shall post notice at the site indicating when the road closure is pursuant to the authority granted herein." And that copy has been made, and copies have been made and distributed.
I don't have a copy of that amendment, Senator. Okay. Okay, for 468, okay, so the added language is, "The mayor shall post notice at the site indicating when the road closure is pursuant to the authority granted herein." So on that amendment, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So again, I make the motion to place Bill 468-31 as further amended on the floor onto the voting file.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered. On Bill 470?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on Bill 470, the version is in the third, that's in the third reading file, has a star on it, and I believe it just, on page three, line 12, it puts a period after manor and starts a new sentence with notwithstanding. The way the other version was just, was a completely run-on sentence, so this just makes it more clear.
On the amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
And I move that that Bill 470-31, as further amended on the floor, be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, we're waiting on Bill 387, that floor amendment, but we probably can proceed to Resolution 433.
Resolution 433. Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill, Resolution 433-31, to the third reading, COR, to the third reading file.
Okay, you're going to briefly discuss it?
Yes, just real briefly, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator.
Resolution 433 is relative to requesting the United States Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Kathleen Sebelius to prioritize and approve the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority's request for relief of Medicare reimbursement rates under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, and to express the dire and emergent situation the only civilian hospital along Guam faces due to the large disparity in collecting reimbursements from Medicare. Madam Speaker, what this resolution does is elevate the efforts of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority to a higher federal level, which is the Health and Human Services Secretary, who is and who will be making a decision on GMH's request to revisit their rate reimbursement structure. As you know, Madam Speaker, the three M's, which is commonly referred to Medicare, Medicaid, and MIP, are the worst category in terms of collection for the hospital. And the Medicare and Medicaid category is something where, you know, we have no direct control over, and so we, you know, we require, and we follow whatever it is, the structure that's set in place already. And so what this does, Madam Speaker, is take this to another level. The Guam Memorial Hospital Authority has moved and met with their counterparts of Region Nine. And so what we're asking, and what I'm going to do, is if this body passes this resolution, is request our delegate to Congress, the Honorable Madeleine Bredalio, to personally hand-deliver this resolution to the Health Secretary and to ask that this case for GMH be put on the forefront, because we all know the dire situation that our hospital is experiencing financially. And so this would be an attempt by this body to ensure that the hospital receives the necessary financial support it deserves. And so I ask my colleagues to please support me in this effort. And also, Madam Speaker, I'd like to add Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes as the second, as the first co-sponsor of this resolution.
On the amendment, without any objections? Yes, no, we're doing that amendment first for second, so the second co-sponsor to add Senator Munia Barnes, without any objections, so ordered.
If page two, line eight, remove the D on plagued?
Remove the, what?
D.
D of what?
And so just to, yeah, to make it recurrently plague the island. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered. So Senator, then your motion would be, I know, to send this down to the third, well, the voting file, but then we won't be able to engross it, so would you please make the motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If the motion can be to move it to the third reading file without engrossment, and we can vote on it without engrossment.
To vote on it without engrossment.
That's right.
On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
The Attorney General or other legal counsel of the agency and where required by law, approved by the governor, and which will conform to a standard system of code of rules adopted by the Legislative Secretary for the guidance of all agencies. Do we want to do this one by one, or do we just want to go ahead and read the whole thing? Madam Speaker? File a printed and identical electronic word version of the original approval copy of the proposed rules and regulations, and one duplicate, and one printed, and an identical electronic copy of the entire record of any public hearings on the rules being filed with the Legislative Secretary of the Guam Legislature. The Legislative Secretary shall maintain a permanent register of all rules, which shall include a notation of the date of filing thereon and evidence of the public hearing held by the agency. The Legislative Secretary shall also cause said permanent register to be published electronically on the Guam Legislature website and update it monthly. Proposed rules should be presented to the legislature as an appendix to a draft bill with a transmittal letter from the governor or the director of the agency, which asserts the governor's approval where required by law, and the directors, and the Attorney General's approval as to the compliance with each of the requirements of this chapter. Evidence of said approval should be, in fact, be contained as part of the agency's record. The subject line on the transmittal letter shall clearly include, "This is a transmittal to E. Leslatour in Guam, proposed rules and regulations pursuant to the administrative adjudication law. If the proposed rules were not adopted by the agency or were not transmitted in full compliance with this chapter, the legislature may return the rules by the Oversight Committee, letter, or a legislative resolution to the agency for correction, and new submittal in conformance with this chapter shall be required. See, no rule shall be effective until further compliance with the provisions of this section, and 90 calendar days have elapsed from the date of filing." of this section, and ninety calendar days have elapsed from the date of filing with the Legislative Secretary. The Guam Legislature may approve, disapprove, or amend any rule within ninety calendar days from the date of filing with the Legislative Secretary, except that any pending rules shall be deemed disapproved upon adjournment synodai of the Guam Legislature." And Madam Speaker, this just, again, based on previous law, this just includes all of the concerns that have been brought up with the meetings that we've worked with, the compilation of laws, and of course, with our colleagues, and the good author of this of this bill, Senator Yamashita.
On the amendment, no objections, so ordered. No, no, that's just amendment first. Now then, on the motion to send, then Bill 387 to the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Espisho, can we, can you make a motion, please, for 437 to be at the bottom of the file first, and allow the clerks to put in all the amendments at the bottom of the voting file?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that you be allowed to reorder the voting file, to have us vote on whatever bills are ready to be voted on, but I, and that includes Bill 437-31. We do have a version that was passed out up until the point of this afternoon's discussion, so the legal counsel is working to engross that entire bill. But the bill that we just sent to the voting file, on Bill 387, I think we can move to vote on that bill without engrossment.
On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered. Yes. The legislature's back in session, and we are in the voting file. So we're on Bill Number 250-31COR. Going to have the clerk please read. Do we have every, can you please bring the mic for the clerks?
Bill Number 250COR substituted by the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Government Operations, and Public Broadcasting, introduced by M. Silva Tyron. An act to add a new chapter, 14th, to Division 1 of Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to memory-stores devices and machines used by government of Guam departments and agencies.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tony Ada? Senator Blas? Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez? Senator Guthardts? Senator Mobini? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Panglinen? Senator Espisho? Senator Rodriguez? Senator Silva Tyron? Speaker Juan Pat? Senator Yamashita?
Senator Espisho, Senator Espisho, a motion, please, to excuse Senator Panglinen?
Yes, Madam Speaker, that standing motion, I want to renew that, that Senator Panglinen be excused from voting.
The motion, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. Substitute Bill Number 250-31COR received fourteen ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute Bill Number 250-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 321-31?
Bill Number 321-31COR, as amended by the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Government Operations, and Public Broadcasting, introduced by B. Anthony Ada, Eileen Iyamchida, Ph.D., F.F. Blas, Jr. An act to add a new section 43120 to Article 1, Chapter 43 of Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to prohibiting secret voting by government of Guam boards and commissions.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tony Ada? Senator Blas? Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez? Senator Guthardts? Senator Mobini? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Panglinen? Senator Espisho? Senator Rodriguez? Senator Silva Tyron? Speaker Juan Pat? Senator Yamashita?
Amended Bill Number 321-31 received fourteen ye votes and one excused absence. Amended Bill Number 321-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 394-31COR?
Bill Number 3? Yeah, I was going to read 380.
Oh, I'm so sorry. 380-31.
Bill Number 380-31COR, as amended by the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Government Operations, and Public Broadcasting, introduced by Adofu B. Palacios, Sr. An act to add a new section 22705 to Article 7, Chapter 22 of Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to the release of working animals from government service.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tony Ada? Senator Blas? Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez? Senator Guthardts? Senator Mobini? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Panglinen? Senator Espisho? Senator Rodriguez? Senator Silva Tyron? Speaker Juan Pat? Senator Yamashita?
Amended Bill Number 380-31COR, COR, received fourteen ye votes and one excused absence. Amended Bill Number 380-31COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 394-31?
Bill Number 394-31COR, introduced by Judith B. Guthers, D.P.A. An act to amend Section 15102 of Article 1, Chapter 15, Title 22, Guam Code Annotated, relative to Certificate of Authority.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tony Ada? Senator Blas? Senator Blas? Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez? Senator Guthardts? Senator Mobini? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Panglinen? Senator Espisho? Senator Rodriguez? Senator Silva Tyron? Speaker Juan Pat? Senator Yamashita?
Bill Number 394-31COR received fourteen ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 394-31COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 402-31LS?
Bill Number 402-31LS, introduced by Sam Mobini, Ph.D., T.R. Munia Barnes, F.F. Blas, Jr., Eileen Iyamchida, Ph.D. An act to amend Section 58110G of Chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring the utilization of locally-based, locally-owned training businesses and services as a condition for the issuance of GIDEA Qualifying Certificate.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tony Ada? Senator Blas? Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez? Senator Guthardts? Senator Mobini? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Panglinen? Senator Espisho? Senator Rodriguez? Senator Silva Tyron? Speaker Juan Pat? Senator Yamashita?
Bill Number 402-31LS received fourteen ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 402-31LS is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 419-31COR?
Bill Number 419-31COR, as substituted by the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Government Operations, and Public Broadcasting, and amended on the floor, introduced by B.J.F. Cruz. An act to amend Sections 5102, 5103, and 5105 of Chapter 5 of Title 4 Guam Code Annotated, relative to an update and revision of permitted and prohibited political activity by government employees, and investigations by the Civil Service Commission.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tony Ada? Senator Blas? Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez? Senator Guthardts? Senator Mobini? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Panglinen? Senator Espisho? Senator Rodriguez? Senator Silva Tyron? Speaker Juan Pat? Senator Yamashita?
Bill Number 419-31COR received fourteen ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 419-31COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 420-31COR?
Introduced by Adofu B. Palacios, Sr. An act to add a new item 1 to Section 3101M of Article 1, Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the renewal of a Guam driver's license.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tony Ada? Senator Blas? Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez? Senator Guthardts? Senator Mobini? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Panglinen? Senator Espisho? Senator Rodriguez? Senator Silva Tyron? Speaker Juan Pat? Senator Yamashita?
Substitute Bill Number 420-31COR received fourteen ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute Bill Number 420-31COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 434-31COR?
Bill Number 434-31COR, as substituted by the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Mediterranean Affairs, and Human and Natural Resources, introduced by B.C. Panglinen. An act to amend Section 1107 of Chapter 1, Title 22, and to add subsection G to Section 1209.1 of Chapter 1, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to research and statistics.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tony Ada? Senator Blas? Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez? Senator Guthardts? Senator Mobini? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Panglinen? Senator Espisho? Senator Rodriguez? Senator Silva Tyron? Speaker Juan Pat?
Ongan.
Senator Yamashita. Senator Mabini.
Substitute Bill Number 434-31COR, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute Bill Number 434-31COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 438-31LS.
Bill Number 438-31LS, introduced by B. Anthony Ada. An act to add a new section 5220 to Chapter 5 of Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to posting bids, IFVs, and request for proposals, IFVs, online.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthert. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One-Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill Number 438-31LS, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 438-31LS is duly passed by this body. Resolution Number 375-31COR.
Resolution Number 375-31COR, introduced by F.F. Blas Jr., Judith T. One-Pat E.D.D., R.J. Rispicio, and others, relative to recognizing and agreeing with the desires of the Northern Mariana Islands Legislature to form the Mariana Islands Legislature Association and to establish within that entity a Mariana Islands Cooperative Initiative to explore areas of joint economic development and mutual benefit between the governments of Guam and the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthert. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One-Pat. Senator Yamashita. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Resolution Number 375-31COR, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution Number 375-31COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 460-31COR.
Bill Number 460-31COR, as substituted by the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Government Operations, and Public Broadcasting, introduced by B.C. Panglinen and B.J.F. Cruz. An act to amend Section 4301.1, Article 3, Chapter 4, Title 4, of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to negotiating and procuring health insurance services for the government of Guam.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthert. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One-Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Substitute Bill Number 460-31COR, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute Bill Number 460-31COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 458-31COR.
Bill Number 458-31COR, introduced by Thia Munya Barnes. An act to repeal and reenact Section 4 of Public Law 31-209, relative to the transfer of parcels in the second Latinx and subdivision, Dedidu One.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthert. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One-Pat.
458. 458.
Senator Yamashita.
Bill Number 458-31COR, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 458-31COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 463-31COR.
Bill Number 463-31COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by Thia Munya Barnes, Judith T. One-Pat E.D.D. An act to adopt the Guam Housing Corporation Administrative Rules and Regulations for the Implementation of the First-Time Homeowners Assistance Program.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthert. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One-Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill Number 463-31COR, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 463-31COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 175-31COR.
Bill Number 175-31COR, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance Retirement, and Land, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr. An act to his own law, Number 5231-9-1, in the municipality of Dedidu from agricultural A-zone to commercial C-zone.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthert. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One-Pat. Speaker One-Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Substitute Bill Number 175-31COR, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute Bill Number 175-31COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 468-31LS.
Bill Number 468-31LS, as amended on the floor, introduced by Chris M. Duñez, T.C. Ada, B. Anthony Ada, and others. An act to amend subsection R of Section 40112 of Title V, the Guam Code Annotated, relative to mayoral duties with respect to routed streets and roadways.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthert. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One-Pat.
Finally, I'm going to vote yes on this bill.
Senator Yamashita.
Bill Number 468-31LS, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 468-31LS is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 470-31COR.
Bill Number 470-31COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by Judith B. Guthers, DPA, R.J. Rispicio, T.C. Ada, and others. An act to amend Section 50103 of Chapter 50 of Vision 2, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Income Tax Refund Reserve Fund.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthert. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One-Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill Number 470-31COR, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 470-31COR is duly passed by this body. Resolution Number 433.
Resolution Number 433-31COR, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Thia Munya Barnes, relative to requesting the United States Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Catherine Sibley-Sibleos to prioritize and approve the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority's request for relief on Medicare reimbursement rates under the Tax Security and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, and to express the dire and emergent situation the only civilian hospital in Guam faces due to the large disparity in collecting reimbursements from Medicare.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthert. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One-Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Resolution Number 433-31COR, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution Number 433-31COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 437. Senator Rispicio, you recognize?
Thank very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the clerks and the legal counsel are going to need just a few more minutes, but we were provided a copy of the version that's been engrossed up to the committee of the whole this afternoon, and it's labeled Draft 6/4/2012 4:05 PM. I just want to call to the body's attention that on page eight, line three, where it says Item 4, Agencies, Division, and Departments, this actually was deleted based on an amendment that was made and passed, so I'm not offering this as a technical amendment because it's not going to be here when they give us the engrossed version. On page eight.
Page eight.
Line three. Line four should have been taken out, just in case our colleagues are looking through this and catch that. Okay, so I move that we take a...
Before that as well, look, remember there was a general motion that was also made on the conflicts of... on the conflicts of, conflicts prohibited in section 15, page three, so please read that as well. Because, yeah, because there was, yes, Senator Rodriguez and Senator Guthertz that made the motion, and then it was required, asked of the legal counsel to make the corrected version of what's in law.
Huh?
But you want to take, wait, you want to take a recess? We're going to take a brief recess. Bill number 470-31COR received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill number 468-31COR is duly passed by this body.
Resolution number 433-31COR, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Thia Munya Barnes, relative to requesting the United States Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Catherine Sibilius to prioritize and approve the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority's request for relief on Medicare reimbursement rates under the Tax Security and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, and to express the dire and emergent situation the only civilian hospital in Guam faces due to the large disparity in collecting reimbursements from Medicare.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Guthertz.
Yes.
Senator Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan. Senator Raspicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat.
Aye.
Senator Yamashita.
Yes. Substitute bill number 387-31COR received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute bill number 437-31COR is duly passed by this body. Resolution number 433-31COR.
Resolution number 433-31COR, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Thia Munya Barnes, relative to requesting the United States Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Catherine Sibilius to prioritize and approve the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority's request for relief on Medicare reimbursement rates under the Tax Security and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, and to express the dire and emergent situation the only civilian hospital in Guam faces due to the large disparity in collecting reimbursements from Medicare.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Guthertz.
Yes.
Senator Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan. Senator Raspicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat.
Aye.
Senator Yamashita.
Yes. Resolution number 433-31COR.
Resolution number 433-31COR, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Thia Munya Barnes, relative to requesting the United States Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Catherine Sibilius to prioritize and approve the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority's request for relief on Medicare reimbursement rates under the Tax Security and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, and to express the dire and emergent situation the only civilian hospital in Guam faces due to the large disparity in collecting reimbursements from Medicare.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Guthertz.
Yes.
Senator Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan. Senator Raspicio. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mabini.
Aye.
Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan. Senator Raspicio.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker One Pat.
Aye.
Senator Yamashita.
Yes. Resolution number 433-31COR. Receive 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute bill number 437-31COR is duly passed by this body. Resolution number 433-31COR.
Resolution number 433-31COR, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Thia Munya Barnes, relative to requesting the United States Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Catherine Sibilius to prioritize and approve the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority's request for relief on Medicare reimbursement rates under the Tax Security and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, and to express the dire and emergent situation the only civilian hospital in Guam faces due to the large disparity in collecting reimbursements from Medicare.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Guthertz.
Yes.
Senator Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan. Senator Raspicio.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron.
Aye.
Speaker One Pat.
Aye.
Senator Yamashita.
Yes. Substitute bill number 387-31COR received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute bill number 387-31COR is duly passed by this body. Bill number 437-31COR.
Bill number 437-31COR, as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Economic Development, Senior Citizens, and Election Reform, further substituted by the committee, amended by the committee of the whole, and further amended on the floor.
Roll call.
I haven't read the title.
Oh, I'm so sorry. And besides, we're missing what is the...
Introduced by Judy T. Guthertz, DPA, Aline Yamashita, Ph.D., R. R. Raspicio, Sam Mabini, Ph.D., Adolfo B., Palacios Sr., and Chris M. Duñez. An act to authorize lease financing for the rehabilitation, construction, expansion, and renovation of public school facilities.
Can you please call the senators in?
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Guthertz.
Yes.
Senator Mabini.
Aye.
Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan. Senator Raspicio.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker One Pat.
Aye.
Senator Yamashita.
Yes. Resolution number 433-31COR. Receive 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute bill number 437-31COR is duly passed by this body. On the appointment, on the appointment of Mr. Andrew M. Gale Jr. to serve as a member of the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your Mr. Andrew Gale Jr.'s duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. Peter B. Montinola to serve as a member of the Public Utilities Commission, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Peter B. Montinola is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Ms. Cecile Bombasuda to serve as a member of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Cecile Bombasuda is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. David T. Lottz to serve as a member of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. David T. Lottz is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. Jeffrey John Ibanez to serve as a member of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Jeffrey John Ibanez is duly confirmed by this body. On motion, wait, so, do you want, Senator, Senator, do you want to be... Senator Raspicio, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, having exhausted the session agenda, being in the voting file, I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
That motion without any objection, so ordered. We are adjourned subject to the call of the speaker.